Sorry, my microphone is broken. Sky is falling. Y'all, thank y'all for being here tonight. It's good to see y'all. And we have an agenda, a new agenda for all of us, so this will be new for us. We don't have to do any of our regular call to order proceedings. So I will call this meeting to order at 5:31. And so we will now have a presentation by Civic Plus, presented by Austin Frank.
Thank you so much Cindy, and thank you for having us here. Our talker.
Can you talk a little louder?
Is it a little hard to hear me? Can everyone hear me alright?
Um, no, they can't. I'm trying to...
You might have to yell a little bit.
Just the volume.
We have a TV or a...
Yeah.
Oh, there it goes. Okay.
You should be good.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Alright, wonderful. There's some nodding heads over there. Well, thank you South Congruent. Thank you so much for inviting Megan and I to come present our web platform. Obviously, you know we're from Civic Plus. Basically, the plan here is, as far as I understand it, and you can let me know if you'd like anything different. Megan and I are going to go into the website for about fifteen to twenty minutes. And then release some time towards the end there for Q and A. If anyone has any questions about our web platform. We're planning on, you know, showing you some of the design options that are available in Civic Plus. How to post minutes and agendas to your website. Integration with MuniCode, which you just purchased from us. And then we'll show you what it's like to edit a Civic Plus website. Is that sound good, or is there anything else that you'd like us to cover?
I think that's good. Go ahead.
Sounds like a plan. Okay. Alright, well, I will turn it over to Megan.
Perfect. Yes, thank you. So I will go ahead and pop up my screen share here. But let me know when you are looking at your current homepage. Yes. Perfect. Okay. And everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Alright, so of course I always want to bring a couple of examples of, you know, neighbors who are already utilizing Civic Plus for their website today. So I've got a couple of examples now. We're always going to customize any website design with your imagery, your branding, and content. You'll have the ability to call out, you know, what's most important. Of course, we love it when everyone can easily pay their bill within one click. So we will work with you through the implementation process of your website design to not only build in your branding, make sure that you have a beautiful website to represent your community. But we'll also make sure that it's easy to navigate, that all of the most popular resources are upfront. This typically includes, you know, some linked buttons to the key areas. Usually always a calendar as well. And then, of course, if you do have any social media, we always play well with others. Whether it's social media, whether it's, you know, a third-party payment processor, anything like that, we're always happy to link out to any resources embedded. Really make it seamless for your residents. Surfside Beach here, they're around, I believe, four or five thousand population size. I wanted to bring them up. They just have a very different look and feel to their website than what we just saw from your neighbor. Little bit shorter banner image here, very beach-focused, which I'm jealous of because I'm here in the headquarters of Civic Plus in Kansas. We're actually Manhattan, Kansas. So we're the little apple instead of the big apple. Alright, now you can see great use of a calendar. We will help to build this out. You can have as many calendar events as you would like. But ultimately, we're gonna make sure that you can maintain this website. You don't have to always put an image with every news item. We can help accommodate that. So we'll really build it around you. That said, the tools that are built into this solution, no matter what, you know, design you have, the tools are still the same, always accessible to you. So you see, they've got a nice election update up here. We call this the Alert Center banner. It's actually tied to our notification tool. So any residents that are subscribed to receive updates, they will receive either an email or a text. But maybe I don't like giving out my phone number or my email address. I receive too much spam already. Everything will, of course, stack appropriately on a mobile device. So even if I just, you know, on my phone have your website's homepage already as a quick link, I can just easily jump to your page, homepage, get connected with any alerts or calendar events. So we do provide not only a great website design, but it's mobile responsive so that it looks great on a smartphone, tablet, whatever you might be viewing on. And then it is also built to be highly compliant with the ADA. That will, if anyone were to come through the site using a tool that if they can't visually see the website, that tool will actually verbalize the website to them. We build everything to be highly compliant with those standards. Any questions around that before I move on? Okay. We will help you to migrate content, so we'll do all the heavy lifting in terms of content and design. And additionally, we do have you currently scoped for our standard website design package. This is a really streamlined website design. We're still going to customize it to your branding, your imagery, your content. But we actually provide you the option to select one of the five templated designs. I'll pull up template number three, which tends to be our most popular. It includes all the same tools, all the same features that we just covered with a predetermined design, which means that you launch a website very quickly, very easily. And of course, everything is still mobile responsive and highly compliant. So that covers a kind of design and implement for the turnkey website, as well as training for people for keeping that website up to date. From there, we do provide an entire help center. We write it all down. So that way, if you ever have a question, I forgot how to do something, don't worry, there's a how-to article ready. Take a look here. At another example, so here's that same, this is an actual customer who is live with that standard template three. You can see their advertising alerts. They've got their news and calendar here. And their unique imagery. So just to show off one of the tools here, this is the built-in calendar. Anything that you add to this calendar is searchable. You can create as many events, or as many events as well as categories as you would like. So every department, committee, commission, maybe the local farmer's market wants their own category for a calendar. You can create that here, create as much content as you would like. There's no limitations. I click once to get a win and a where. And then I can click in for more details. We can see that agenda added right here. So full calendar included, and this is also built into that notification tool as well. I wanna make sure I briefly show what is available on the backend of the website. Show you just how quick and easy it is to add an agenda. But any questions about what you've seen from a front-end perspective or what the residents, you know, might see when they come to you? Let's go ahead and jump over here to a brief, very brief backend demonstration. I do want to be clear, I'm always happy to jump in to, you know, any more detail if needed in additional meetings. So if you ever need a more specific, you know, demonstration, bother Austin, he knows how to get ahold of me. And always happy to jump in. But this is what a staff member would actually see with this solution. You can see we have all the essential tools available. We call them modules. So I have an agenda center here. Here's that alert center where I could post that banner that we saw at the top of many websites. We do include analytics with this tool. But don't worry, I know analytics can be overwhelming. So part of your ongoing annual services is access to a customer success manager, which is what I used to be. And we'll put your annual analytics into a nice, you know, format, nice presentation that you can easily review, pop into an agenda. To go and post an agenda, I come to the agenda center. We'll come here to the technology committee. I can see a list of my previous agendas. So here's, my technology committee is on Tuesdays. So it's the fourteenth, I can see that. But now I'm working on next week's agenda, so I just click the green button, add agenda. And I am just going to simply upload my October twenty-first agenda here. You know, as long as I don't forget how to spell the word agenda. Of course, you can link out to any media, so just like today, you know, if you had a Zoom link that you wanted to share, or maybe you have a YouTube channel that you're posting recordings to, just easily pop them into here. Now I have my file upload for the agenda. We were chatting about this a little bit before, but we only serve local governments around the US and Canada. So we're really familiar with the ever-evolving, you know, compliance environment. And we always keep our websites updated for that. So what I'm doing here is I'm actually uploading a Word document, and then we have a built-in PDF converter. We'll ensure that all the text in this document is highly searchable and compliant when viewed and published on the site. Now I'm gonna publish this document. We have a couple, you know, integrations, or really just ways to streamline your actions. So I'm gonna publish this agenda to the front of the site. I'm also going to edit a notification to send out by email or text to notify anyone who's subscribed. So maybe, you know, I'm a member of this council, and I want to be notified when the agenda publishes on the website, so I can go view it, see what we're talking about next week. Again, all of this is built-in functionality. I clicked. Now, final item here, a lot of times, we're probably going to need to link that agenda to its associated calendar event. But that's duplicating your tasks, so ours is built-in. I select, here's my Tuesday Technology Committee, and I automatically add that agenda link to that calendar event. So within a couple clicks, I've posted to multiple places on my website and sent out a notification. Now I know you might not be doing the day-to-day kind of publishing of agendas here. But really, this can streamline the staff time and effort to really make sure your website remains updated, making sure everyone has access to these essential areas of information. So of course, I can now click over at that page load up here. Sorry, I don't get there. That's my internet. There we go. Reload one more time. Come on, internet, you can do it. There we go. So, Technology Committee, and here's that October twenty-first agenda. And it's a PDF now, so I can open this up and view that, see what we're talking about. Then when I'm done, exit out, and I'm right back on your website. All on one page, I can see that agenda. And then you can also link out to that minutes document and that media file as well. So all in one place, I can view all public documentation with that meeting event. And again, all of this rolls up. Does that seem pretty simple? Perfect. Now I don't wanna take up too much of this time here today. I wanna make sure, you know, again, I'm always happy to do a more in-depth backend demo for anyone. Is there anything that I haven't shown here today that you would like to see that would help you make a decision?
I just have a couple of questions. We do, we are able to connect MuniCode and post it, if you correctly. Is that a correct answer or question statement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So both are provided by Civic Plus. And so yes, there's benefits of having both of those tools available through us. Let me, apologies, I paused my screen share there. But I can show you what that looks like real quick if you have a moment.
Do you have another question while you're looking? If we chose to go with you, what kind of timeframe are we looking at to construct a new website?
Yeah. So in terms of the website timeline, and Austin, correct me if I'm wrong here, just in case I'm a little bit behind. But with that standard layout option, it's a really streamlined project. That said, we are going to ask for some deliverables from you. So I don't know, if you have like a big Christmas vacation coming up, we're gonna factor that in. You know, if something like elections, you know, delays you a little bit, we factor that into the timeline. But typically, is it twelve to fourteen weeks, Austin?
Typically, for the standard design, we're projecting it about eight to ten weeks, actually. But like Megan said, you know, factoring in the upcoming Christmas holiday, New Year, Thanksgiving. Normally, we get to Q4 toward the end of the year. Probably, probably gonna be a little bit longer, just because, you know, of the holidays. But yeah, eight to ten weeks on average.
And then, real quick, Surfside Beach is a great example of the integration that we offer between that MuniCode Codes and Ordnances solution. When I go and search for something like permit on their website, it will first show me any site content like the license and permits webpage, which provides me more information. But then I can see a tab here for municipal code. So I don't have to go and find that municipal code portal. And instead, my search term is now searching those codes and ordinances. And then when I click, it proceeds out into that MuniCode library and to that very specific section of the code or ordinance.
What kind of lag time?
Then, of course, that opened. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
What kind of lag time is there between once an ordinance is enacted and we send it to MuniCode, that it gets posted on here?
So we, you know, I have a, we have a agreement with MuniCode that we can send them as many ordinances all year long, it's included in the cost, and they will upload them and codify them twice a year. Sorry.
No, perfect. Thank you. I tend to be on the website side. Was an entirely, sure.
And another question, in the design, is there an assortment of color combinations that work together? Choose from, or do we just have to standard color? Because it's a standard website from you all.
So many times, our municipalities may have colors that match their current crest, branding, anything like that. And of course, we're always willing to lean in. But we will absolutely kind of recommend, you know, and provide you with all the branding and colors that you approve. There's, you know, if you don't want it to be the template colors, we're gonna change that for you. Make sure it matches with your branding. We'll provide all the guidance for that. We have a full design team on staff to help.
Any more questions?
The question I have probably would be more, Kelly and Crystal, with websites that we're going now, what's the cost of this?
I sent out a memo earlier that actually is in September. And this, they will bundle the package for us. The first year cost will be thirty-six, sixteen, as opposed to fifty-four, five thousand five hundred fourteen dollars. Since they would bundle it with MuniCode. And then the annual recurring cost will be forty-six hundred.
And just because of the large audience too, we're already gonna be saving a lot of money, right, going to MuniCode?
Yes.
Well, did we figure out exactly how much we're saving by?
It was probably five or six thousand dollars.
So that kind of pays for this itself, it's kind of.
And the, and the MuniCode is actually, ends up being less, the MuniCode actually ends up being less per year. So, because they have a flat rate, instead of charging a per-page certification charge.
Right.
Looking at it.
Yeah, I knew it was significant, because I think we were gonna end up having to pay ten thousand for American League.
Just to get updated.
Just to get updated, yeah. Not to do future.
No.
Just to get updated. So we're saving significantly by just bundling and moving.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions?
I mean, I'd like us to have a future meeting to decide on the design, because I'd like to make sure that I like how they showed those calendars right there, and then you can check on that date, and it populates your agenda, and and that way, knowing, honey, on that website's hard for me, and I'm a county person, so. And I'd like to see our YouTube channel, like, just everything right there, easy, so that it makes it consistent for us.
And it makes it, and actually, we're talking about the ADA compliance.
Right.
All websites have to be compliant by April of twenty-twenty-seven, currently Department of Justice, and ours is July. So we have to, we're gonna have to do something. So, and this, it will be built compliant. And so anytime we upload Word files, it'll convert to PDF, and it's automatically searchable. And it is automatically, so it'll be able to read to people if, you know, they can't see it.
Read it.
Which is very important, to be able to have the ADA compliant. And they will be able, you will be able to, I mean, we were talking about rebranding, you will be able to colors according to the logo, or whatever brand you guys know. They did say that we could start. So the estimate was until October thirty-first. We will ask you to, according to the expenditure at the October, was it the twenty-first meeting? But we don't necessarily have to start the process right there. We can wait until we have determined a logo that you guys wanna use, and then let him help with, you know. So basically, the website that we have is, we get to select from five different layouts. I think number three was the one that she was showing us, which is number three template. And they'll go in and change out the colors and stuff. It'll be fairly simple for them, once we have the branding.
Once we do all the work, it's easy.
Once we get, once we get the branding done, they'll, they'll actually pull their information off of our website and merge it into the new site.
That's something that we don't have to do a lot.
As like a better background picture of that.
Yeah.
Yes, we will have to work on that.
So let me ask you a question. So in West Columbia, when you guys rebranded into that new logo, did you guys put anything out for your citizens to like vote on what they liked better, or did you guys just?
They had, they, yeah, they hired a branding, they had a branding company turn off them to go out. And they went to different people in the community and asked them their thoughts on what they would like to see as far as how they want, as far as how West Columbia was moving forward, you know. How they would like to see what kind of things they would like as far as the website and the, I mean, the logo and that kind of stuff goes. What they saw as the future of West Columbia. And all, they took all that information, and they combined it, and they, you know, then they started the logo process. The logo wasn't necessarily chosen by the community. It was chosen by staff and then council for the final. Staff determined, and they're down, and then council approved the final. So, you know, we can do that if you like. Sounds good.
Thank you guys for the presentation.
Likewise, thank you so much for letting us present this to you. If any questions pop up in the meantime, feel free to shoot me an email, give me a call. My phone number should be in there. At least Kelly has it, so. We're here to be resourceful for you, so we're really looking to get started for you. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate your time. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Austin.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you for setting that up.
It's nice whenever you can actually see what's gonna happen.
Next is our presentation from Kelly in regards to some upcoming events. Oh, I thought we were doing the events.
I've got, I've got my card, so it's good. Okay, so the municipal associate getting the mayor council. The Municipal Association of South Carolina has provided the town with the updated twenty-twenty-five business license class schedule. As a reminder, South Carolina Act one-seventy-six, Business License Standardization Act, requires all municipalities and county governments that impose a business license tax to update their business licensing class schedule every odd number of years, with the revisions taking effect the following year. Twenty-twenty-five is the designated years for municipalities to review and update their licensing practices to ensure continued compliance with the state law. The town of South Congaree must adopt the updated class schedule by December thirty-first in preparation for the business license renewal period, running from May first, twenty-twenty-six through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. We had a member of council that also requested that we review the town business license fees and consider updating them along with the class schedule. I emailed you all a copy of each of the ordinances as far as the business license goes. Do you, do you have any questions as far as that goes?
So if I understand it, they give us some model?
Yes.
Ordinance.
They do. They give us a model ordinance, and this year, it is, basically, we are only reviewing the, um, the, I'm sorry, the rate classes, which is basically the NAICS code. It's how the, um, the different types of businesses are classified, so that whenever we enter them into the system, like if it's mining, it'd be a class three, and that cost would be whatever rates you guys have set for that, which right now, they're all the same.
That's what I follow, I don't think we have to do it for it.
No, you don't. The, the rate class doesn't really affect you guys unless you want to change the, the way the business license operates. I mean, it, we will be compliant with the state law, but it's not really going to affect the way that we factor the business license cost. If there's an interest, do you have a recommendation to us? Should we look at editing what we have and making it along, more along the lines of the different rate classes municipalities like?
You're talking about rates, our rates?
Yeah. It is a good question, and it would require some in-depth research.
Okay, so let's do that.
The, I think that incorporating the rate classes would be helpful. I know that our base rate is eighty dollars, and then anything, you know, over that is three dollars a thousand, that's up to two thousand dollars, and then anything over that is thirty dollars a thousand. Which works until you get into large business license fees, and then it's a little out of whack. So I do, I do believe that it can be adjusted, but I would really like to spend more time on it before, and I don't think that I can get it done by December.
Well, it's something that we can begin to look at and research, go ahead and pass the ordinance, and then decide in twenty-twenty-six.
Yes, ma'am, most certainly.
Yeah, have, have moved forward with that.
Yes, ma'am.
That makes sense.
And I would also consult our county attorney and make sure we are good to go. Okay, so basically, then I will bring the, uh, the, the tax, the business license from MASC, the templates from MASC. I'll bring that to the October twenty-first. I'll bring that to the October twenty-first meeting, for y'all to approve. And then we will submit that to MASC, once it's had its second reading. Any other questions?
Can you just do the second reading?
Yes, we'll do the second one, and then I'll go. And since I'm here, I'll just go ahead and do the, the upcoming litter event and Christmas tree lighting budget. So the town of South Congaree will host a Keep South Congaree Clean event on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from nine to twelve. We invite you all to come, help us clean up South Congaree. We'll meet here in the town hall parking lot from nine to twelve. It's also in conjunction with the Police Department's Prescription Drug Takeback Day. Town staff have participated in the, in the community event. All volunteers are estimated here at nine AM. I would like, if you have any recommendations on areas of town that need attention, I would love to hear them, so that we can have a direction of where to start. And then, the Christmas tree lighting is scheduled for Friday, December fifth, twenty-twenty-five, at six-thirty PM. It is moving from Sunday to Friday, and Friday evening. I'm currently finalizing the program and gathering pricing details for the event. And the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget council approved three thousand dollars to cover both the tree lighting and the Christmas parade. And then, the information on the chart that I provided to you guys outlined additional expenses recommended by the planning committee, which includes upgrading the electrical box near the tree. And from what I understand, it is in really bad shape. So that is something that I think is definitely necessary. It includes decorating the tree, adding string lights to the crepe burnouts, securing the uplights that are on the trees now to the trees, so that they can't just be kicked over. From back up, yeah. I also included the invoices from ACS Sound and Lighting, Lights Up SC, and DNG for your view. ACS will provide additional lighting to help light up the kids' faces, since it'll be dark during the tree lighting. And then, the Christmas parade will be held on December thirteenth at ten AM. The cost for the parade is really minimal, so I don't anticipate that being more than a couple hundred dollars, which is not included in this price. Do you have any other questions?
You said, what was the date on the parade?
December thirteenth. And then, I will be getting the information out about that, the tree lighting and the parade, if it's possible.
Is this something that the H tax?
H tax can cover the cost of this, the events entirely. Anything that is a big purchase to even fixing the electrical box, because it is desperately needed, can be covered in H tax, which is wonderful.
Could we also work to possibly get town businesses to make a contribution?
We can.
To employ them some, you know, some way.
We can. Right now, time is the, time is the essence of the essence for just right keeping up, so. I would love to be able to go out in the streets and go knock on doors and everything like that, so it's, it's not often that I can do that. I am willing to work on that, I'm not, I'm willing to work on that, I just don't.
But we know the amount of money in the H tax fund.
Don't quote me on the exact amount, but I think it's seventy-seven thousand and some, a couple hundred dollars, but it's right at seventy-seven thousand.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Something that I would, I know that we just got through talking about business license, we were talking about this, about those boxes. Something that I would encourage from the town, you know, when we do fundraisers, we ask the local businesses to give money and other things like that. And I would encourage the town to, to use local businesses to do some of our work, to keep that money in town instead of out of town.
Yes, sir, most definitely. Um, the, the businesses that I have used on here, have been used previously for the tree lighting, except for ACS. And I have a very good relationship with them, coming from West Columbia, and they are kind of giving us a deal on, they're giving us a deal on what I've asked them to do for the tree lighting, so. We always try to use the businesses that are in town for everything.
Excuse me, canal coffees.
Yes, they are going to, they are, and they have discounted the cost of the, um, part of the, part of the event is they're going to bring their big truck, they have a big truck, and they're going to, the town is going to provide, I want to say, like, three hundred cups of coffee and a couple hundred hot chocolates or something like that, I forgot the exact number. But they basically brought their price down to two dollars each, so that we can provide that for the attendees to the tree lighting. They're very excited to work with us, I'm, I'm super happy.
Sounds like you have a great bit of plan, just by looking at it, it's going to look really pretty around here.
I'm, I'm excited to get going. Yeah, it is, but it's worth it when you get to see all the smiles on the kids' faces and stuff like that, so. Did you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here to do a presentation tonight for you guys about the operating hours for town hall. Currently, the normal business hours are listed from eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, with the exception of our observed holidays. During next week's regular council meeting, I'll be requesting that council consider approving the following changes to those hours of operations. Staff will work from eight-thirty AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, with an hour lunch. The office will be open to the public from nine AM to five PM, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, but will close on Thursdays at noon to allow staff uninterrupted work time. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about that recommendation.
Repeat it, please.
Absolutely. So staff will work from eight-thirty AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. We will have the office open to the public from nine AM to five PM on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, but will close at noon on Thursday. So we're open nine to five every day but Thursday, and we'll close at noon.
Any comments or questions?
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move next to our stormwater ordinance amendments. In twenty-sixteen, the town formally adopted Lexington County Stormwater Management Ordinance Number sixteen dash oh-four to align with the countywide standards. Since that time, the county has made at least one update to the ordinance Number nineteen dash ten, and that was done in twenty-nineteen. The proposed amendments that you have before you will incorporate the county's most up-to-date version, Number nineteen dash ten. And it also will include language that will automatically update the town's ordinance to reflect any future amendments that's made by the county to its stormwater management ordinance. This ensures that we continuously have up-to-date ordinances that comply with the counties, and we don't have to keep coming back to council for you to amend this ordinance every time that the county updates theirs, it will be done automatically. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about that ordinance. We will have first reading for these amendments on the agenda for next week, and then have second reading in November. Hearing nothing else, I'm going to turn.
I would turn it over to the next one.
We appreciate y'all. For those present that maybe not, do not know, this is Joseph Dickey, our town attorney.
Ladies and Mayor and Council, what Ms. Parker just handed to you is a redline version of the town's handbook. The majority of the changes you'll note in there are changing mandatory language to permissive language, as is typical and required, or not required, but I guess suggested, or basically plug laws when you're doing a handbook. There's also been updates to drug testing policy, alcohol testing policy, as well as some minor tweaks to social media policies and, um, social media policy and, I think, electronic media policy. However, there are some other updates that are needed that I do not have listed in the redline. Some of those will be striking certain, certain visions within the handbook, such as references to contract employees, because there's no such thing, and other things such as looking at where there are provisions that require the town council, the police chief, and the town administrator to make a decision, because that's just not efficient. So those things will be covered to you in an email. I would recommend you have, when we take this to a vote on next meeting, that we have an executive session to receive some legal advice regarding some of the provisions in the handbook, some of the changes that I think we should discuss in that matter, because some of these things will have some ramifications. And I think it's suitable for the public, based on the personnel nature of it. But those are the majority of the updates you see right there in the redline. There's nothing for you to do tonight, just review those. I'm happy to answer questions about things, if necessary, tonight. But some other things I would prefer to address, so next week, when we take it to approval, you will get a clean copy of the redline copy of the completed handbook within this week. And we'll have it all, all together for you at the next council meeting for approval. If there are no questions from Mayor and Council, you have my side.
Mr. Jackson?
I'd like to talk tonight about us repealing our ordinance and the election day change due to several things. I know when we were given it, it was as if we had to make two decisions. And we're not at a time where we have to make decisions. Also, after getting input from several citizens, you know, we all represent the citizens, and we all work for our honest, I mean, we all do things in an honest capacity. We know when we're elected, and we know our term limits. And I thought about this other day, like, with our president, no matter which one it is, or who you like and who you don't. No elected official should be able to extend their term without the input of the people. And what I would suggest is, let's go back to doing as in April. So going up in twenty-six, we would move it back to April, and then make the change whenever we have to make the change. Because at the first meeting we had that night, Mr. Delusa was here, and apologized for not extending it in the next meeting, which I made that motion, but it was under not clear advice, that we had to make those two decisions. And I think for the sake of the people, because we would, by leaving it here and having it at the town hall in April, it leaves the people with less confusion of having to get two different poles. That would cost us more, I, you know, seeing I'm having two different poles, would be cheaper than one pole, and be less confusion on the people of our town. and be less confusion on the people of our town. But a lot of this comes from the, I've gotten over fifty calls from this. I've had people stop me in the grocery store, and you know, it was a concern that was asked for me to bring up, and I agree with it, I think that we should stick with it. And I know my term is coming up next, and I still agree with it.
Any more comments?
I mean, y'all know where I stand. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think the president could extend his term just because they've had on it, so. I don't think we should extend our term, and I've gotten a lot of feedback myself from it. A lot of people didn't appreciate that that was done.
And I do think that's something that we should get input from the people. We represent and we work for the people.
We really have to follow the law when it comes to elections.
But they haven't changed that yet.
They haven't changed the law, though.
It will change, and we're going to be mandated to change it, so.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Foster?
Well, just like Katie was saying, it's going to be mandated, so if you can do it now, which is already done, or you can do it in two years for the same thing is going to occur, because the town's been out of compliance.
We really haven't been out of compliance, you know, out of compliance. That was directly in our charter when we made it, just other towns have gone that direction.
Yeah, we're legally not out of compliance, and I don't think we should be able to extend, but we could give up part of it, and I'm happy with leaving it in April and changing it, and I give up my portion of account of a term. I'd rather give up six months than extend a year and a half. We're not being forced to do it right now. I'm not saying it's not coming down in the future, but it is right now. And we all agreed initially to do it anyway, and I know that a lot of people said we didn't have time for everyone to know, but they also are doing a special election for a house seat here, and plenty of people know, and that came later, and plenty of people are well aware of that, so I really think that we did have time to change it and give up six months. I'm just, I can't imagine adding a year and a half to anybody's term on any seat in any government. Even if I was not on council, I couldn't agree to that, and I would be surprised that that's even allowed. I mean, I guess it is, but.
Have you received any calls?
I have. I have been stopped and receiving many calls.
Have you received any, have you received any, Ms. Bautnay?
No, I've not received any. I do receive phone calls and emails and texts, but nothing about the election. I did just share with you guys an email that I received just yesterday afternoon from Leniche Shoemaker. She is the Director of the Election Commission. It says, "It has come to my attention that there may be concerns regarding the Town of South Congaree's ordinance changing when they will be conducting elections, moving from even to odd years for elections. I know that the General Assembly has been addressing legislation attempting to move all municipalities from even years to odd years of elections. I believe updating this legislation is beneficial for all voters. This legislation is an attempt to increase awareness of elections and update the election cycle to be conducted every November. As you know, the turnout for your elections in particular have this played very low turnouts. We believe following the same schedule for Lexington County elections, conducting them in November will increase voter turnout, as voters will become accustomed to following other municipalities as a whole. Apart from one municipality, all Lexington counties, since we changed ours to November on odd years, there's only one municipality in our county that conduct their elections during, anything other than November on the odd years." And she says, "I want to encourage you to maintain this change in your ordinance and allow your voters to vote with the existing municipalities of Lexington County. If I can offer additional information on the subject for you and council, I just want to share that with everybody."
I said, coming up on the 21st, we would put that on the agenda for the people and let the people give their input to us.
Well, we could keep it in April and then change it for the next go-round. Like, keep the two that are coming up in April, and then change it, and then nobody's extending. Like, you're not going past it, it's anything you're giving up some time. We can still put it, it just wouldn't be, if we're not voting in November, anyway. This November, we're saying we're not. I mean, you're saying it has to be the odd year, 2027, right? So you could still keep April's and then make the change after April going forward for the other three of us that would come off, that would go on for the 2027.
That would still extend those terms?
It would not extend it.
It wouldn't be 2027, so when is our next election?
Well, I've been advised, I've talked to many elected officials. They said, "An elected official would never take time off." Now, that said, if you wanted to resign.
Who said that? What elected official said that?
Several elected officials have told me that. They would never reduce the length of time. Attorney, ask our attorney, what are your thoughts on that? Would an elected official want to reduce, I mean, we were elected by the people, would.
Very well, that is my issue that I would, if we comment off, you know, my capacity as town attorney.
Well, it sounds like it's just a personal opinion then for people.
Yeah, it is a personal.
I have a problem with, so you want to put it on the agenda for both?
And let the people speak before we go.
Well, that's what we do readings for. In this particular ordinance, just like every other ordinance, we have two readings for public comment. So, we'll go through that process again, just later.
And I'm not going to do it for any, I just feel like right's right, and the number of phone calls I've had, and the number, and the way it was presented to me from the citizens that were concerned about it is, I have to disagree that any, any elected official would want to add a year and a half to their term, or would feel like that was right.
Well, we did have a first reading, and everyone voted and agreed to give up six months. And then, the second one, everyone agreed, not me, I wasn't, I was out of town. Everybody else agreed to add a year and a half, so I don't know. I know that the reason, I understand your reasoning, is because you didn't feel like people had enough time for us or whoever was running to advertise themselves, to know about it. But I can tell you that I absolutely know who's running for 88, District 88, because my phone's blowing up, my email's blowing up, signs are everywhere. It doesn't take six months to, or however many, it doesn't take that long. We could have kept it where it was, and plenty of people would have known who wanted to run for the, those seats, the two seats that are coming open, so I kind of.
I hear you. I hear what you're saying, Brian. I don't disagree with you. My only issue with this is that we have taken a step forward to move our elections to November odd year. I think by going back to the old way, we're going backward. And we're trying to push forward with our town. Everything we're doing here, we're trying to push forward. We've got competent people working in our town hall, and I just think going backward is a step backward. That's just my thoughts on it. But, that said, you can resign from council anytime you want. There is nothing that says you have to stay on for any length of time. You can resign, including me, so.
American resign.
Excellent. I've been talking with Leniche early on, early emailing her, early on, there is a significant cost difference in doing a municipal election as a sole municipality, as opposed to doing it collectively in November with other municipalities, because the cost of early voting, if we do it suddenly in April, would be exorbitant. Our election in 20, this past election, cost us something like thirty-five hundred dollars.
Well, you guys saw the difference. It was only a two thousand dollar difference.
Did that include the, yes, the extra?
Yes, yes. And per conversation with her via email, it would be less for us to collectively do the election because of using a combined effort with other municipalities for early voting. And it's just a significant cost difference, as well as, here we go again with confusion with our citizens. I just.
I'm not trying to do confusion, I'm just trying to do what's right, and what is evident going to do.
So, let me ask this question. So, how do we go through, how do we go about that? If Mr. Jackson is wanting us to, I guess, is he asking us to vote, to bring this back?
It appears to me that Mr. Jackson is asking for it, to something to put on the agenda for public comment, or something, or something like a, I'm not going to call it a public hearing, but it just seems like he's asking for you, for council to put it on the agenda, the agenda item, that can have comments, something like, similar to a planning commission meeting. So, that's councils wish to do so. I mean, one council member has asked for it, they'll get it on the agenda.
But now, legal advice, I do have a question on this that Debbie brought up, because we had to revoke something before, that our first reading said one thing, and our second reading was totally opposite.
Well, I want to provide a legal advice to the public, and the public portion of the read, if it pertains to something that is a legal matter that is concerning the town, as far as the state and law building. And so, that's something we need to address, in an executive session in the future, or a hall fund, probably in a small group, instead. I'm happy to do so.
But I am asking it to be put on there for the people to comment, and for us to vote on. So, and we hear the people's comment, yes.
You can't just repeal it.
Yeah, and we just repeal the ordinance.
I expect a reading, so.
If that was the case, then we couldn't go with the revision of this, because we have an ordinance that says what our, the way our agendas have to say in the order.
And the town.
And the town.
We never changed the ordinance for the town during meetings.
We did that at the beginning of '24.
I mean, we laid it on it, but we did, we have a first and second reading of our ordinance.
Yes, we did, we did.
Do you have that?
I have a signed copy.
Okay.
But two wrongs don't make a right. Even if it is wrong, you have to follow it. You have to do that for the purpose of that.
So you're asking that that be put on the agenda for Tuesday night for public comment?
And for us to vote to people.
To repeal it.
To repeal it.
Any more discussion?
It says, "Televise, please call your council people if you're out, wherever you're not at this meeting. Let them know how you feel."
Excellent.
Nothing unfair about every, every one of us.
Any more discussion on that? Here and now. Thank y'all again for coming. Meeting adjourned.